Right, yes, it's working. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July Cabinet Meeting. Before the official start of the meeting, the usual chair's announcements. We're not expecting a fire drill, so if the football rings, please leave by the front door and assemble by the warm memorial. Anyone attending the meeting can film it, but only the officers and councillors sitting around the table. And would you please put your mobile to silent? Thank you. Right, so the first item on the agenda is apologies, Mr Mayfield?
Yes, Chair, we've had apologies from four of the opposition spokespersons. Their councillors are Gisby, Highland, Porter and Roberts. Thank you.
And Chamberlain as well.
And Chamberlain.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, the normal declarations of interest. Anyone who has interest in any of the items on the agenda should declare that now or within 28 days of the meeting. Item three is the minutes of the meeting on the 7th of June. Can I sign those as a correct record?
Three.
Thank you. Moving on, we have public questions. And I've been asked, normally it was a Covid thing, that we asked for questions to be submitted in advance, but I'm happy to take the question now in person.
Good evening. Julia Jeeps from Beaulieu Park area. Speaking on behalf of several of the residents, and I know that councillor Moore is aware of their concerns because they attended a parish meeting the other night. Generally speaking, the question is about the lack of management of the grass areas and the areas around Beaulieu. People are very now fearful of a fire as a result of lot grass being left to grow very long. There are other potential health risks, which include the fact that in some places it breaks the line of sight for vehicles on some of the back roads, tick issues, all sorts of things that come with this. But mostly and predominantly now, with the grass having reached probably in some places over two feet high, that that is a risk, a real risk of fire into people's homes. Now, a local resident has actually cut grass because of that, has been told not to cut, and I would like to know where the risk assessment is and what the council are going to do about the risks to people's homes and their real concerns about that.
Okay, thanks very much. Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mrs Jeeps. I raised this immediately with Paul Van Damme, and it did come to Springfield Parish Council on Monday evening. Paul Van Damme is our manager of Parks and Green Spaces, and he confirmed that all the areas that were subject to the low-mow policy, which is the whole of the Chelmsford district, will have been assessed, including a full risk assessment, and that does include the fire risk elements of that. If you need more detail on that, I suggest you request that in writing from the officers. They'll be very happy to provide it. And there are a number of issues raised on the floor at the council chamber at Springfield Parish on Monday. These also apply to areas elsewhere in Chelmsford. In short, the areas in Beaulieu, having been visited by Paul and myself, this really is the sign of the success of the policy in terms of biodiversity. We reversed the mowing regime so that the close-mown areas are still undertaken where we need access and for amenity space. And of course, our sports pitches are still maintained in the same way. But at Beaulieu, we have cut pathways between the edging of one area of housing particularly that was voiced as a concern for fire. There is an informal goalpost that I saw that's obviously been used in the past, but this was part of a dedicated area for grassland this year. If residents would like to speak with our team about leaving an area next year, then please do so in good time. But we will not be reversing the policy. And I can reassure you, I hope, that all of those areas in Chelmsford have been assessed for safety, including road verges and pathways and the approach to roundabouts. So all I can do is ask you to work with us as residents. We did communicate this through Paul Van Damme, who wrote directly back to the clerk of the parish council. And I'm also very happy to visit residents and walk through the area with them if that would add reassurance, further reassurance to them. And I'd just like to thank you for your time in coming this evening and raising it in this forum. It's very important that we communicate with residents, and I was very pleased to see such representation at parish on Monday evening. I do appreciate their time, too.
And thank you, councillor Moore. I hope that reassures you. And as councillor Moore said, please do get in touch. And obviously, we take safety issues at a high priority, but also so is climate action. And we've got to do something. We all have a responsibility to do something about action on climate change.
Mr Chair?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I don't think we have, just going to check, I don't think we have any other questions from the public, do we? No? No, okay. So councillor Steele, yeah?
Yeah, I'd just like a clarification. I actually did see the answer that Paul Van Damme responded with in terms of ownership, and I was slightly confused, and I wondered if you could clarify it. He said that the city council plans to adopt this open space in due course. We were trying to work out on the asset register whether they already owned it or not, so perhaps they don't own some of this area. But what exactly does 'adopt it' mean? Does it mean take responsibility for looking after it but not owning it, then? And in that case, who continues to own it?
The land would, at Beaulieu, would potentially still be owned by Countryside, Countryside Zest, but is adopted by city council. That's our preference in our open spaces policy, is that city council adopts areas of land and manages them on behalf of the landowner in accordance with the council's policy, which means that we have oversight of those public spaces. The new Beaulieu area is managed by Land Trust, remains unadopted. But the old existing Beaulieu Park would be preferentially adopted by the council and managed by us.
Mr Nicholson, did you want to, you were indicating you had something to add that might be helpful?
Well, I can do. I think I'd just point out you're talking about two different areas, and I think the reference that councillor Steele is making is to the, what's known as the Deer Park, you know, at Beaulieu. And that's currently in the ownership of Countryside. It's maintained by Countryside. The trees are planted by Countryside. The trees have died, but they'll be required to re-establish those. And there's a landscape management plan that's in place, which is a planning condition. And when all of that work has been done to a satisfactory standard, then it is the intention that Countryside will transfer that land to the city council to adopt as public open space. So that's...
Apologies as well?
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's the, in terms of the Deer Park. You know, there were other complicated arrangements in place, as councillor Moore said, on other parts of Beaulieu, where pieces of land have not been offered for adoption and not been transferred.
Okay. Yeah, and now we're on to members' questions for items that are not, for the responsibility of the cabinet but aren't on the agenda. So councillor Whitehead?
Right, thank you. I've got one from councillor Potter originally, who was hoping to be here, but is unable to be here. It relates, in fact, to the points about mowing and such like, because Galley Wood Common, of course, is her area and is under threat, in her view really, by the amount of growth. And I think she quoted, she sent me something, which I may quote you from, which says, 'Our area has a great network of footpaths that should provide safe walking routes away from traffic, but they're poorly lit, uneven and overgrown.' And these, of course, are Essex County Council footpaths, and so you're unhappy that they're overgrown, but not unhappy that ours are overgrown. And clearly, this question of sightlines is a sort of town and country thing to a certain extent. I mean, those of us who live in roads that you can't see around any bend, and cyclists, of course, especially, are caused by this. It is causing a lot of problems. One or two areas were cut recently. Well, I travel up on a bus route area, which of course shouldn't be, the hedges shouldn't be cut, of course, because of birds and all the rest of it. But for safety reasons, it's been done. And it does seem to me that we need a slightly exception policy for certain areas where you come out of roads that, you know, cow paths is this high and so on, where people can't see. What I'm trying to say, sorry, it's a bit long, but is it's wrong to have a blanket policy without exceptions being available. And it would be helpful if we could suggest, parishes or whatever it is, could suggest certain exceptions to you that need looking at because local residents, you know, are not surprisingly concerned on that. So I don't know whether that can be looked at generally.
May I defer to Mr Nicholson for this, because he's the operational brains.
So it probably won't surprise you that councillor Potter's been in regular and direct discussion with me on this and other matters. So just the point about Galley Wood Common. Of course, Galley Wood Common, the majority of Galley Wood Common that isn't wooded, is subject to a pay-making regime and has been for very many years, and that is generally successfully implemented. There are a couple of sightline issues on the road out from where councillor Potter lives, which have only just been cut from a sightline point of view. So, but that's now been picked up. In respect to the wider issue about the highway areas, we cut the highway verges under contract from Essex County Council. They pay for one and a half cuts on average a year, so that's all they allow for. And as part of that contract, which is actually done by a third party who we contract manage, the, there's a regime for picking up the sightlines, you know, for road junctions and such like. I mean, it's clearly identified in the, you know, in the contract. So if there are any that have been missed for whatever reason, then people just need to let us know, and then we'll get on to the contractor, you know, to get them sorted out. Because the sightline issue, the safety issue, is a clear part of the specification. And actually, that's the only reason, really, Essex County Council, you know, pay anything, is because of the safety, you know, issue. It's not enough, you know, for general concerns, but we make sure that the contractor, you know, meets those requirements for the particular road junctions.
And just to come back on that, would it be possible, therefore, for us to have a list of those sites available so that we can reassure our parish councils and things like that? Because they're the ones that have been raising those, you know?
Well, it's basically, if you think of any road junction that's got a sightline, it's that. So if it's an issue, you know, a sightline on a road junction, if it's an issue, you know, the sightline's blocked, then you just need to let us know, and we'll try and get it sorted out. I mean, it's not, it's not rocket science. It's, it's really, really simple, you know, what's been done, what's been paid for.
So I think what Mr Nicholson is saying is, you couldn't provide a list, was it basically every road junction in the district needs to be kept safe? So if a junction has been missed, then let the team know, and it will be sorted, because that's under the county council contract, as it should be.
But as we don't know when they are to be done, how would we know that they've been missed if they're not due to have just been done?
I think, I mean, I, there's one, there's one junction in my ward which I make sure is dealt with every year. And this is a highway, so that you win. The thing is, we're now squashing two separate subjects together. There's the Essex County Council highways management regime and the city council's climate action low-mow policy, which is two completely different policies. And the policy is driven by different policy objectives. But if you've got a safety problem, talk to the team. I think that's a simple point, isn't it? Councillor Moore, just to finish on this point?
Just to finish, just to say, we welcome suggestions for areas and will review, obviously be reviewing. This is year one of the policy, and we're already seeing huge benefits in terms of our biodiversity gain and the amount of flora and fauna that's developing in these areas. And I welcome that. And thank you again for your question.
Who was next? Councillor Steele, then councillor Massey?
Thank you. I just wanted to check the process later this week on the Policy Board, if you can just inform me. I know we're considering, the Policy Board's considering the response to National Grid, and I think the extension wasn't until 16th of July. Is the output of the Policy Board then going forward, or does it, it doesn't have to go to Cabinet or a Cabinet member, it just goes straight out once the Policy Board has completed? Okay, you're nodding, so?
That's the case, Chair. The Policy Board can respond to that sort of consultation under its terms of reference.
Okay, good, thank you.
Right, councillor Massey. Nice to see you again.
Thank you, Chair. Seems like only four hours ago. Yeah, this is another one for councillor Moore, I'm afraid. I emailed councillor Moore on Friday, and I'm awaiting a response. One of my residents, amongst my residents, I have a family of Afghan refugees. The father was formerly an interpreter for the British Army in Helmand province. Having settled in Southwoodham Ferrars, he and his family are keen to learn to swim. It's a skill they didn't need in the Highlands of Helmand. He visited the leisure centre in Southwoodham and was told that while Ukrainian refugees are eligible to use the pool free of charge, Afghan refugees are not. Can we get some clarification on that, please?
Thank you, councillor Massey. I will follow up again with John Lyons. He was out of office on Friday. I admit this is an unusual situation to be in. We did offer swimming to Afghan refugees at Riverside. There are obviously some cultural things to take into account, single-sex swims, for instance, and being sure that there are no male members of staff present on the site when females are in the pool. So this is, you know, there are issues to resolve, but I agree, in principle, we should offer that service. And I hope to take that up with John. We have a Cabinet Member's briefing on Wednesday, tomorrow afternoon. And so we'll discuss then and get back to you. Thank you for the question.
Okay, councillor Sochin.
Yeah, thank you, Leader. I've got two questions. They're linked, so I think I'll read them both out unless the preference is to do them one at a time. A petition has been launched by a member of Great Badde Parish Council, headed Sanford Mill Waterworks, but is actually about the developments of Manor Farm, Hopkins and Redrow. I asked the Cabinet Member for Sustainable Development to confirm that there are no plans for housing and development at Sanford Mill, and exactly what the plans are in place. Now, I have read on the item seven of the Policy Board, point 3.7, the development potential of Sanford Mill site is being examined by a project group reporting to the Waterways Working Group. A site report has been prepared by consultant, but further work has been delayed by Covid. So, and the second question, because it's linked, really. Great Badde Parish Council has expressed concern that the SUDs proposed for the developments east of Chelmsford will be inadequate for extreme rainfall, potentially add to the flooding at Sanford Mill cottages, et cetera. Please confirm that the adequacy of the proposed SUDs will be examined as part of the planning application process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor McQuarrie?
Thank you, councillor Sochin, for the question. As you say, you're aware of the report going to Policy Board on Thursday from the Waterways Working Group, and this particular site is discussed in that report, as you may have already noticed. I think the, just to really repeat what it says in there, so that it's in the public domain from tonight, but obviously it'll come up again on Thursday. But what the Working Group has said is that it will review the future use of Sanford Mill and the surrounding land in accordance with its special policy area, which is referred to in the local plan. The notation is SPA 5. For example, introduce commercial use of the engine house with improved visitor facilities, providing the focus for wider recreational use of the Chelmer East Green Wedge, which is identified in the adopted local plan, and possibly local natural resource centre on the former Waterworks site, so that it can be, so it can operate as an all-year-round destination. And link to the master plan for East Chelmsford strategic growth area, which should provide some of the supporting infrastructure, for example, new access road, car park and contribution to a new visitor centre. And that's all part of the planning obligations for that wider development. So you went on to ask about the footnote, the development potential of the Sanford Mill site itself is being examined, and this is again in the report on Thursday, by a project group reporting to the Waterways Working Group. And we had initial workshops, and you may have been present at the time, 2019 and 2020, and a site appraisal examining the development opportunities has been undertaken by external consultants. But further work is temporary on hold due to other priorities, in particular arising from the Covid-19 outbreak, which has had implications on staffing time. But this will allow the extent of the planning obligations to be confirmed, and that is a position as far as the current town planning status is concerned. But I understand my colleague councillor Goldman may wish to add a comment about the potential future uses. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor McQuarrie. Councillor Goldman?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, councillor McQuarrie, and thank you for the question, councillor Sochin. I want to clear this up, because this word 'development' is being used a lot, and it can, the word 'development' can be used to mean lots of different things. Of course, development of houses, and that's what we're talking about on the site, which is the east, which is in the east of Chelmsford, and that is where there are going to be houses. Crucially though, development of Sanford Mill does not mean houses. We are not at all thinking of putting houses on the Sanford Mill site. That is not in our plans whatsoever. I am the Cabinet Member for Connected Chelmsford, as most people here know, and Sanford Mill essentially falls into my portfolio. I do not want to see houses where Sanford Mill is. It is an asset that the council needs to develop, there's that word, 'develop', to make it a better asset and a more, and an asset that, as councillor McQuarrie said, is used all year round. But that is not for houses. That is for the, for possible leisure pursuits, that is for potential revenue income for the council, that's things that we could potentially use it for educational purposes. There are lots of things that it can be used for, but it is not for houses. I don't think I can say that clearly enough at enough times. Just to be really clear one more time, development on Sanford Mill that is being looked at is not for houses. It's how do we develop it into something with, that better, I don't know, looks at the potential that Sanford Mill has. I think it has loads of potential to contribute to the cultural future, potentially of Chelmsford as well. And of course, we're, there's going to be a lovely country park around there as well. It's a beautiful, beautiful location. It needs a bit of love and attention, and that's what we're going to be looking at. But it will take some time for that to come out, but we certainly have absolutely no plans to build any houses on the Sanford Mill site.
Thank you for the responses. I would like a written copy so that I can make it available to Great Badde Parish Council, if that's possible. And then there's the second question about the SUDs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So moving on to the sustainable drainage systems, fondly known as SUDs. The sites in East Chelmsford where housing is being proposed are located within the Environment Agency flood risk zone one, which is the lowest risk from fluvial, that's river flooding. The local plan was accompanied by a strategic flood risk assessment, and this was prepared in consultation with the Environment Agency to inform where development could be located. And Policy DM 18 of the Chelmsford local plan requires the provision of sustainable drainage systems for the disposal of surface water within and leading from major development sites. And the principal method that should be used is sustainable urban drainage systems, which both the developers at East Chelmsford, that's Hopkins Homes and Redrow Homes, have shown in principle in their approved master plans how this is going to be done. So the SUDs features are designed to not only mitigate the impact of development itself, but factor in future climate change when working out the volumes of future water needing to be managed. The detail of SUDs will need to be approved by Essex County Council as the lead local flood authority, and they, as a statutory consultee, had been consulted as part of the current planning application submitted by Redrow Homes. And I've got the reference, which I can, it's very long, but I can let you have that with the, with the written response. Thank you, councillor Sochin.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you very much. I don't think there are any more questions? No? Okay, so that's the end of the questions section. Thank you. So moving on to item six, there are three items from the Cabinet Member for Farah Chelmsford. The first one, 6.1, is the Treasury Management Outturn for last year. Thanks. Councillor Davison?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief on this one. We receive a report at this time every year. It summarizes how officers have managed our finances, in effect. There's nothing I particularly want to draw attention to in this report. Officers have done an excellent job. They've looked after our money. They've ensured we have cash available when we need it, and they've generated a very good level of income from the resources available. This report needs to go on to council next week, so I'm happy to answer any questions. But in the absence of any, I'll simply ask Cabinet to recommend that council approve the report, and I'd also ask Cabinet to thank officers for the very professional job they do in managing our finances, and also to thank members of the Treasury Management and Investment Subcommittee for their oversight of this work.
Thank you. Nope, nope. Okay, no questions. Is that agreed, then?
Agreed.
Thank you. Right, the second one. Councillor Davison, again?
So the second one is the capital program update and provisional outturn for last year, 2021/22. It's another report we receive at this time every year. Again, it goes to council next week. And this report provides an update on our capital spending program. This is a program that enables us to continue delivering all the services that our residents depend on, emptying their bins, maintaining their parks, alleviating homelessness, running our theatres and museum, and our leisure centres, and many other vital services. So we've got ambitious plans that are reflected in the capital program. We want to modernize our theatres. We want to develop various sites we own, both providing much-needed affordable housing and creating new communities that we can be proud of. We want to invest in decent temporary homes at lower cost for families that have found themselves homeless. We want to invest in Highland's House, so it can offer an even better experience to visitors. We want to deliver on councillor Moore's promise- We want to deliver on councillor Moore's promise on our behalf to plant one hundred and seventy-five thousand trees over ten years, and to make progress towards our target of making the city council zero carbon by twenty thirty. And I'll repeat something I said in council in February, that I'm proud that we've set out on a path to convert all our vehicle fleet to reduce and ultimately eliminate reliance on fossil fuels. All vehicles we purchase now are electric or other ultra-low emission, such as hydrogen, except where genuine operational constraints make these unsuitable, or they're simply not available. Now, as well as updating the costs of the existing program this time, there are two new schemes relating to the Army and Navy. The city council's been asked to provide four million pounds towards the estimated sixty-seven million pound cost of the main Army and Navy scheme, and the government is expected to fund most of this cost. The junction improvements, enhancements to the park and rides, better options for cycling and walking, will obviously benefit residents, they're long overdue. Essex County Council will work with the city council to make further improvements, though, for cycling and walking, and we've allocated an additional one point five million pounds of contributions from developers for this. So these two schemes are linked, but because our contribution to the first is conditional on the county council working with us on the second. So most of the approvals that we will be needed to enable us to deliver this ambition are for council next week, so Cabinet's role is merely to recommend the proposals to council, and I invite Cabinet to do so. But in addition, I ask Cabinet to approve the changes to the asset replacement program involving some minor additions to cost increases, minor additions and cost increases, plus some adjustments to the timing of the expenditure in that program. And the difference, of course, as you'll recall, is that the main program is for the large projects, whereas the asset replacement program is to ensure that we replace vehicles and other pieces of equipment when they, when replacement, when they reach the end of their useful life. So if there are any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I did note on page thirty on the three, four, one, that with the Housing Infrastructure Fund grant, it says that so far has been drawn down four point four six million out of a total of thirteen point seven, and that has to be drawn down by March twenty twenty-three, which is about nine months, eight months to go. Is there a danger of all of that not being drawn down? What, what, if that's true, what's the cause of that? What's the consequences of it all not being drawn down? And is there a plan to try and not leave money on the table?
Yes, there is a plan. This is the, this is the Chelmsford Waterside Development. So we're taking the, the area where the gas holders used to be, that whole area, and we've got an ambitious plan, but in order to build a very significant number of houses on there, or homes at least on there, to open up the river, to make much better use of that, to develop that into an iconic new quarter of the city that we can be proud of, we need to increase the access, because the junction of Springfield Road and Navigation Road, thank you, can't take extra capacity, therefore we need to build the access road, the bridge, to get access to it. There's also decontamination works need to be done, that's a former industrial site. So there's a significant amount of work, and also the moving of the gas pressure reduction system from its current location out of the way to, to the new location that we've discussed previously. So all of those works need to be done, and in order to assist with that, Homes England have, have agreed with us a significant amount of funding, and that's what we're talking about here. Yes, there's a timetable, and yes, we are required to make sure we've spent that funding by the date that's in the report that you quoted, by the end of March twenty twenty-three. And we've got project managers working on it, we've got officers who are very much dedicated to ensure that we achieve that. I hope it won't come to having a conversation with Homes England and saying, we need to move that date, because we're very much working towards achieving that, but I don't think that it's necessarily the end of the world, we'd, if there's some, you know, the pandemic, for example, was an external factor, and we had a conversation with them, but we are working to achieve that, and I'm pretty confident that that, when I say pretty confident, I am confident is what I should say, that, that that's a project that's under control, and we will get our new homes, our new businesses, our new riverside frontage, our new bridge and roads, and all of that fantastic quarter, and, and that will be delivered, but not the whole of it by March twenty twenty-three, I should say.
Well, thank you. It does sound ambitious, by March twenty twenty-three, so good luck with that, and I think you're saying your contingency plan is basically to try and talk them into a longer deadline, if necessary.
No, I, I think that the plan is to continue the, the work. We're at stage one of the detailed design and technical approval at the moment, that is going well, and then we move into stage two, and there will be payments, because there will be expenditure, and that will be paid at the appropriate time. I don't, I was going to say, Mr Graham may wish to add.
Thank you, Chair. So I think councillor Silly's asking, will we be able to draw down the nine point four million remaining from the Housing Infrastructure Fund before March twenty twenty-three? The works that Caden will be delivering, and the detailed design and technical approvals for the bridge, we, we're pretty confident we will have expended that nine point four million by the time we get to March twenty twenty-three.
Any other questions on the capital program?
It's a general one, inflation, the magic word of the moment, of course. You do mention it in the report here, and say changes will be reported. Are you likely to report something at next, next week's council meeting, which I'm, sorry, I won't be at, but nonetheless, given the, the current sort of numbers on there, and the fact that the budget was produced this year, early this year, as it were, are you expecting major changes?
I don't know whether Mr Reeves wants to add to this, but I'm not expecting to report anything at next week's council beyond what I'm reporting tonight, because the papers for council are the papers for tonight, and, and therefore, we have factored in what we can, but inflation is a big unknown, isn't it? And a lot of the capital program involves an amounts of capital, amounts of capital that have been set aside, where ultimately, going ahead will depend on testing the business case at the time that we know what the actual cost is going to be. And undoubtedly, some of the costs of some of the items in the capital program will be higher than they were originally expected to be when they were put into the capital program. That's certainly the case.
Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a very quick one on three point four point two about land acquisition for a cemetery or crematorium. Is there an implication here that we, we may end up without a crematorium or a cemetery?
No, there's no such implication intended. Our expectation is that we will go ahead with the plans that I think you introduced to, to acquire land and to build a new cemetery and crematorium. Our cemetery is running out of space, our crematorium will need significant work on it, and it will be a more viable option for that to be done on a new site, rather than trying to do it on the current site. The costs are higher than they were, when I say the costs, the likely costs, as we sit here forecasting them today, are higher than you thought the likely costs would be when you sat here some years ago doing that. So, which is why this says that before any purchases made, there will be a review of the business case. We need to ensure that it's still a, an economically sensible thing to do from the council's perspective. Having said that, we do have a statutory obligation to provide that sort of, that service, and therefore, I'm not sure it's going to be open to us to leave ourselves without any cemetery or crematorium. But at the moment, we continue to search for land, and what we're saying is, it looks as though that search is going to, if it's going to have a result, it'll be at greater cost than previously, which is why we're setting more capital aside, so that we don't suddenly find that we need to find extra capital that hadn't been allowed for in the financial projections.
Thank you. It was, it was that last sentence that confused me about a review of the business case, so thank you.
Okay, I don't think there are any more questions. So is the capital program, that bit that we can agree is agreed, and the rest of it is referred to council?
Agreed.
Okay. And then the third item is our medium-term financial strategy, looking forward the next couple of years.
Thank you, yes. The, the medium-term financial strategy, so again, this is the third of the finance reports we receive at this time every year, and this report goes to council next week. It provides an update on our projected finances. We've just been talking about the capital program. This is looking at the broader financial position over what amounts to the next six years, and it's provided in July each year in order to provide the context for the next round of budget setting. And just for the, the benefit of anybody, we're not broadcasting, we are, for the benefit of anybody who's watching this online, the budget for next year is presented to Cabinet in January each year and council in February each year, so we are six months away from, from presenting a budget for next year, but nevertheless, the work to prepare that is starting now, and this provides the context. Now, it's entirely usual, this far out, to have a gap between what we're currently forecasting our spending will be over, over the, this period, and the income that we expect to have available to fund it. So, for example, in July twenty eighteen, my predecessor was forecasting a gap of one point three five million. A year ago, I was forecasting a gap of one point seven million. By the time six months later that the budget proposals for the next year are published, these gaps have been closed, because we have to present a balanced budget. This year is no different. We have a forecast gap that's admittedly somewhat larger, at four point two million for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four on our central case, but I expect to present a balanced budget in January. What, what this report is telling us, though, is that the challenges this year are much greater. As we saw during the pandemic, the city council's finances are very reliant on income that we generate. Only about a quarter of our spending comes from council tax. Almost nine pounds in every ten pounds of council tax that we collect is passed on to others. Most of it goes to Essex County Council. Very little of our spending is funded by the government. We keep a small proportion of the business rates we collect, and we sometimes get grants for other specific activities. So we have to rely on income that we can generate through cautious investment of the spare cash that, that we have, through the rents on property that we own, through charging for our leisure centres, for car parking, for theatre tickets, for hiring out Highland's House for weddings, and so on. Now, in a lockdown, as we found, our income falls, and equally, when the income, when the economy falters, our income stumbles, and this country has now entered a cost of living crisis. Inflation is forecast to be in double figures later this year. That's quite shocking, it's the highest it's been for forty years. Residents are suffering with huge increases in the cap on domestic energy bills. Diesel and petrol prices at the energy pumps have, at the, at the petrol pumps, the forecourts, have hit nearly two pounds a litre. Food prices are going up far more than we've been used to, and yet earnings, pensions, benefits are not keeping pace. So people will survive by spending less, and that will affect our income. The city council's spending equally is caught in the same storm. Energy costs have gone up by nine hundred thousand, fuel costs are up by three hundred thousand, as we were just saying, the prices of building materials are pushing up the costs of our capital program. Now, all councils face these pressures, we're not alone, we've managed our council, this council's finances very carefully, and we're in a far better position than many other councils, but we're not immune to those, to what's, to what's happening externally. Now, the government helped councils with very significant grants, so they could survive the pandemic, a time when income fell and spending had to rise. We need the government to help again, otherwise all councils will have to stop delivering the vital services that residents depend on, and frankly, some councils will go bust. We've no idea what the government is going to do, nor frankly, who the government will be in six months' time. So there's a level of uncertainty that's a worry. Meantime, this report plots a course to enable us to manage through this uncertainty, and I'll pause there in case there are any questions.
I don't think we've got any questions. I mean, we're all in speculation mode at the moment, aren't we, really? And it would be unwise to speculate further tonight, I think it's fair to say.
So in that case, can I ask two things? One is I ask Cabinet to recommend this report to council, including, I should add, the small budget increase to facilitate the change in fuel for larger vehicles that's set out in the report, and that's a step towards our ambition of achieving net zero carbon. And the other thing, I think, is I might ask councillors on the other side of the chamber to encourage colleagues in their party who find themselves in government later in the year, to, to ensure that councils are given the support from government that, that all councils will need in order to survive this.
Okay, and so is the report agreed?
Agreed.
Right, thank you. So moving on to the next item, just the, what the, is on the screen, the UK Shared Prosperity Fund has been created by the government to replace some, although not all, of the funding that we used to get from the European Union, and officers have worked together on a presentation which Stuart Graham's now going to run through.
Thank you, Chair. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Stuart Graham, the Economic Development Manager at the City Council, and I'm just going to spend five minutes of your time introducing item seven to you, set out the background to the UK Shared Prosperity Fund and the approach that we've taken to develop our investment plan as to how the city council could spend it moving forward. So just a brief background to the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. It was launched by the government in April of this year, and it aligns with the government's levying up agenda with the overarching aim for places to build pride in their areas and increase life chances of local residents. There are three core investment priorities that all areas are expected to invest in through the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, and this is set out in a prospectus that we have to follow. Those three themes are communities in place, supporting local business, and people and skills, but the funding for people and skills doesn't kick in until the third year of the funding round. So what has Chelmsford got? I think the first thing I should just say is, we're not in a competitive bidding round as we sometimes are with grant funding, we don't have to, we're not competing with other areas, we have an allocation allocated to us of just under one point two million pounds, but to secure the funding, we have to submit what's called an investment plan to the government, which they will assess. um, which they will assess and hopefully sign off. And once that, once that happens, um, the authority receives the funding broken down across the three financial years as shown on the screen. Um, not so much in this year because obviously we're halfway through the financial year, but building up around to twenty four, twenty five, when the bulk of the funding is available. So the key priority for us at the moment, um, i- has been to shape our investment plan. Um, and we haven't really had a lot of time to do it, but we've been working really hard behind the scenes to do that. And I'd just like to set out the approach we've taken. So the the key thing to say is that we've worked, um, obviously across the authority, but more importantly, externally with a range of external key partners and stakeholders to develop the investment plan. And you can see on the screen the list of some of the the external partners we've worked with. I won't read them out. Um, but we we're still speaking to people, yeah, as of today and and going forward. Um, and the other key thing just to say is we we've tried to align the investment that we want to make with the funding um, alongside our existing strategies. We we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We don't want to duplicate, and we want to add value to what's already happening out there. So our our plan aligns with the corporate plan, our cultural strategy, our economic development strategy and our health and wellbeing planning. So what you what you see in the report is is linked to existing strategies. So I mentioned the three strands that, um, the government expects us to invest in. Alongside that, they've, uh, provided a menu of forty one interventions to help guide us. Uh, we don't have to, um, invest in all of those interventions. And indeed, we don't have to invest across the three core objectives. We can choose what we think is right for our area, um, which is what we've done with our partners. So over the last six to eight weeks, we've been talking to everybody, engaging with with partners. And we've identified that, so the E numbers are the, uh, are from the menu of the the government interventions. And we've selected, um, the thirteen interventions on the screen there. Um, the bulk of those are against the communities in place and supporting local business work streams. But there is an element across the people, people and skills, um, strand as well. So we've developed, um, those interventions. Um, and you'll see in appendix two to the report, um, the suggested funding allocations that we're, um, suggesting we allocate funding to across those thirteen interventions. Now, also in the report, you'll have seen at appendix three, there's a list of nineteen projects. They are the projects we feel fit those interventions the best. There is flexibility within those projects, but we broadly feel, having spoken to our partners, that it's around, it's those nineteen projects that that we feel we're in a good position to invest in that will deliver the best outcomes for, um, our local people and businesses. One of the elements in the prospectus that the government has provided, um, is that they, the government expects local authorities to work through a, um, an established partnership, community partnership, um, organisation to oversee and endorse the investment plan. And obviously, in our case, we have the One Chelmsford Board. Um, and we, um, have identified the board as the most appropriate body through which, um, we would want to monitor and manage the investment for the investment plan over the three years. And we presented this, a very similar presentation actually, to the to the board on the eighth of July. And, uh, the the investment plan or the emerging investment plan was endorsed by the board on the eighth of July. So we're in a good position in Chelmsford, we have that board in place. They've endorsed the plan, and we'll work through the board, um, uh, to oversee and manage the investment plan moving forward. Just in terms of next steps, so we have to submit the investment plan to government by the first of August. Um, and we would expect to hear in the autumn of this year if the investment plan is, um, planned to be sound. That's a bit local plans speak actually, but if it's if it's identified as a as a plan that the government, um, feels that we've identified the best outcomes for our people, and then we would hope to, um, secure the funding later in the autumn, and that will be the funding secured for the spending period over the three years. So I'll end there. That's a brief introduction to to the report.
Um, thank you very much. Um, just to add to what has just been said, um, on the actual agenda item report, um, towards the end sets out pages nine to eleven, the detailed funding proposals that we're setting out. Um, and twelve and thirteen kind of describe the projects in a bit more detail. And I particularly draw attention to the larger, the larger ones or particular proposals on health inequalities. That's something which councillor Moore and I have been discussing quite a lot with colleagues on One Chelmsford Board and the new integrated care system and care partnership. And there's an opportunity for us, um, to pool funding with, uh, via the ICP, uh, which came into effect on the first of July, um, to actually try and address some of those health inequalities which we were touching on earlier today at the county council. Um, the other significant investment which we are proposing, um, will support our ambition to support, uh, help create jobs, um, in SMEs in the tech sector. And that's the innovation hub proposal which is set out in the report. And all of this, as Stuart Graham's just said, we've discussed with our other partners in the public sector that, uh, which is the One Chelmsford Board meets three times a year. And we discussed that, uh, last Friday, and they supported these proposals. So are there any questions on the proposals in the report? Councillor Bentley.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I've just got one, one question because, um, looking at the the lists that were up there um, to do with the the selection from the, was it forty odd? If you go back another slide. That's the one. I notice on the people and skills ones, you've got E thirty nine green skills courses. Um, but there's nothing on the supporting local businesses to actually feed those new skills into. I was wondering whether, you know, that that somewhere in there, there was a plan to support green, uh, the green economy and, you know, set up new green businesses, that sort of, and provide support for that.
So 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 hidden away with, under all those interventions, there there is the funding against those interventions. So under the business support interventions, we're already working across the North Essex area with partner authorities and with the county council. And we would be looking as part of the business support elements to potentially fund upskilling businesses on the green agenda. In fact, that's something we're already doing with some existing funding.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, no other questions? Councillor Moore, do you want to add something?
Just very quickly, please, councillor Robinson. And we understood that on Friday, we hadn't had the the letters of support from all three constituent C M Ps of Chelmsford. And I just wondered if we'd had those or when we might expect them.
Um, I'm going to be sending, if this is approved this evening, I'm going to be sending them a reminder just to chase them up and and get their support. Um, because as Stuart didn't mention in the in the, um, in the presentation, but we have to have the support of the constituent C M Ps on this.
Yeah, because Vicky, Vicky Ford was, well, supposed to be there but wasn't. As I wrote a report for her, which her substitute read, read out, as it were, yeah.
He did, and we answered a couple of questions.
He seemed too busy doing something, I'm not sure exactly what. Uh, and John, yeah, I don't know.
We'll chase them up. Okay, is that, is that report agreed? Thank you very much. Um, right, so moving on, um, to item eight. Um, we have some, uh, amendments to the constitution coming forward from the Constitutional Working Group. Um, these fall into two broad categories, um, sort of, amendments to delegations and the financial rules. Um, on the, there's two appendices that cover those two topics. Um, so on the delegations, uh, some community funding and the waterside project panel and some others to amend to officers. Um, and then on page two and on to, yeah, and it isn't really a three, it's just, um, on page two, uh, is a slight tweaking to recognise the fact that, um, we have two smaller independent groups now. Um, but we want to recognise their legitimate rights to speak at cabinet, but, um, so those are the sort of tidying up rules to the constitution. And then, oh, there's the revised financial rules. And you'll see, as you scroll down, there's a few comments which indicate what the changes are. Does anybody have any questions? Councillor Bentley.
Thank you, Chair, inevitably, um, as the only one here tonight from the, um, independent groups or the smaller groups. Um, I agree with the need to, um, to let cabinet flow as a meeting. Um, got no problem with that. Um, it's true that our opposition to this is based mainly on the consequence that minority groups will be more restricted in the contribution we're able to make at cabinet meetings with this amendment. However, um, to say, the proposal I made at governance committee was simply that minority groups, which have five or more members, should be able to take positions as opposition spokespeople in the same way as the largest minority group does and as we did at the start of this administration. Clearly, at present, we do not have sufficient members in either group to trigger this. However, it probably hasn't escaped notice that next year is election year and that council membership will have a new look. There may be an increase in the size of all minority groups such that this change to the C W G proposed amendment is triggered. Uh, then, right from the start, minority group opposition spokespeople could be named rather than have to wait until after this meeting in twenty twenty three. That's nearly three months before the possibility of official recognition is put into place. And it only being a possibility since we don't know what attitude the new administration will take. I'm asking Cabinet to refer this amendment back to the Constitution Working Group and Governance Committee to make the required changes so that future minority groups of sufficient or significant size are not disenfranchised even if for only three months. Thank you, Chair.
Um, well, I, I think we can go away and think about that separately, but, um, but I I I don't think it would take three months to make the changes. I think we can quite legitimately would bring changes and any changes, any change in administration would change things, rules that they needed to, uh, the council AGM three weeks after the election. And I think that would be the place at which to change standing orders, and they're often changed, to take uh, account of any election changes. Um, and I'll just reiterate what I've said before. Um, although, uh, we're we're setting these out in the rules of procedure, um, I think you'll agree that I don't think I've ever stopped anybody actually, uh, asking questions other than the same question on the same point more than once. Um, so, you know, at here at cabinet meetings, I think I'm fairly flexible. Maybe even more flexible than councillor Whitehead was. Come back again.
Thank you, because that, that, that wasn't, yeah, that wasn't really my point. But I mean, I I accept all of the the need for that flow in the cabinet meeting. So you haven't got too many people speaking to drag the meeting on. The point was that it's having the positions as spokespeople for your group at the beginning of the new administration. That was the the issue that I was raising.
Well, I'm sure we can, we'll deal with that after the election and in the interim between the election and the AGM. I don't see that as being a problem. But in the meantime, I'd ask Cabinet to agree that report. Is that agreed? Thank you. And that's it for this evening. Um, councillor Whitehead said, will it be a short meeting? That's sixty two minutes, that's, yeah. You're up to stay in here, because it's very hot outside. But anyway, thank you for your attendance this evening. Um, I'll just confirm that, as, uh, councillor David said in presenting them, those reports go to council, don't they? Mr. Mayfield, yeah?
Yeah, unusually, all of the items on the agenda go to council this time, Chair.
There we go. So you can do it all over again next week. Um, thanks for your attendance. Good evening.